All right, welcome to Planning Commission. I am people, this is the first time chairing this meeting for me, so please be patient with me on this. We'll start off with a with an invocation and a Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Mitchell will start us off with a prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful that we could all be here this evening. We're thankful for the circumstances we have to meet. We pray at this time that that would be with us as we go throughout the meeting, that we can all do so in a peaceful manner and and all will go well. We're so grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this community and pray thou continue to help us to make it a wonderful place that we can enjoy. And we thank thee in this. We pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first thing on the meeting is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at it?
Chairman, while they're looking, I do have a need to leave the meeting at about seven o'clock, so if you or the public see me get up and leave, it's not because of anything that was said, I just needed to run to a family thing.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The next is the approval of the minutes from the June 5, 2024, meeting.
Commissioner Tupow, I move to approve the minutes from June 5, 2024.
Ms. Sheil, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So number three, declaration of conflicts and absentations. We good?
I'm good.
Okay, so to start the night is item number four is the zone change for, and this is a public hearing, for the consideration and recommendation to City Council on Zone Change Z dash 2404, the designation of an overlay zone for for a bar establishment as found in Title III, Chapter 3, and located at 1720 East Grapevine Crossing. So sorry, guys.
This is the Planning Commission.
What's that? And Eldon, sorry, you're up.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval for a bar establishment overlay zone in conjunction with the current Sienna Hills PCD zoning designation. The total area of the proposed overlay zone is 40 acres and located at approximately 1720 East Grapevine Crossing North, as you can see there in the exhibit. The proposed bar establishment overlay zone, if approved by the city, provides entitlements to sell alcohol product for consumption on the licensed premises and in connection with a license issued by the state of Utah to operate as a bar establishment. Businesses wanting to operate under the bar establishment overlay zone will be required to gain site plan approval from the city prior to opening their doors for business and as found in Title III, Chapter 3 of City Code. This application is not site plan approval. The application designates the larger bar establishment overlay zone, which will then allow businesses to submit for specific site plan approval at a later date. This concludes staff report, and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions that you may have.
Chairman, if I may, just give a little primer on the city's alcohol regulation laws, mostly because it's not something that this commission or the city council handles on even a yearly basis, so it's fairly rare. Washington City for decades has had a regulation on alcohol sales in the city. That regulation is a quota based when it relates to bar establishments, and a bar establishment is a definition from the state of Utah, which regulates alcohol in and out of the state as a monopoly, a government monopoly, both for the wholesale distribution of alcohol as well as the import. And so Utah defines what a bar establishment is. Washington City Code states that as for policy of the city of Washington, as defined by the city council, the city will allow one bar establishment license per every 20,000 of citizens who reside in the city. For quite some time, Washington City has only had one because of that quota. Our current official, well, everybody has a little different number, but currently we believe we're at about 36,000 residents. And so that would mean that we still only have one bar license per the quota. About three years ago, the city council considered some applications, not some applicants, but but some some ideas and and just concepts from businesses in the area of the idea of allowing an overlay zone to essentially create a a district wherein the quota may not apply as strictly. And so that the concept there is an applicant could bring a overlay zone application and would have the opportunity to convince the council that this is an area that's commercial in nature and meets other criteria that the council might be might be concerned about, which would allow the zone to issue more than the quota base basis of licenses for bars bars in the city. And so, in other words, it carves out a little area. City Code states that no matter what the there could never be more than three bar licenses issued in the city under the overlay zone model. And so at maximum today, if somebody was able to get all approvals from the state and the city council, they could have three bar licenses in overlay zones, maximum. And then however many bar licenses are calculated from the quota system that's based on on population. So as of today, that would be four maximum, three through the overlay zone, one from the quota. As the citizen numbers grow, obviously, the quota calculations change. But that that's essentially just the nuts and bolts overview of how the city's regulation of alcohol licenses applies. Certain establishments, such as gas stations and others that sell sell alcohol for off-premise consumption are not regulated under the same system. They are regulated, but we don't have a quota system, for example, for beer sales from gas stations. The state also regulates them, but again, not not in a way that restricts their existence. Restaurants also are going to need a that issue that sell alcohol are going to need license from the state and from the city. As long as those locations have profits from food sales that exceeds profits from alcohol sales, they also are not defined as a bar establishment. And so there's a whole whole layer of different regulatory definitions as to what that location is and how they operate that might have them defined as something not a bar. This application tonight for the overlay zone would be for the bar establishment licenses. Other types of establishments may be able to locate there without this, but that's what the request is tonight.
Okay, so that to this Commissioner Mitchell, just to clarify, because I think you stated it, because that was a question I had in my mind. So you can my best description was like a Chili's that has a bar within their facility doesn't constitute a bar. A bar is more that specifically you're gonna go, you know, to get your drink or wanna play games, whatever. So that is a a more clear picture, I guess.
Correct. Yeah, Chili's is a good example, Texas Roadhouse, Ribbon Chop, you know. I don't know their numbers, but they sell drinks as well, right? Same type of drinks that you could get at a bar. They also sell a lot of food. And so those ones, per my understanding from trainings from the state and things, sell sell more have more profits from food sales than they do from drink sales. As a result, they're not identified as just a bar license. They're usually a restaurant with with bar type license or whatever the detail is the state calls it, but you're correct. Those would still need licensure from the state because they're still selling alcohol, and they would still be required to source their alcohol through the state's monopoly, but they aren't required to get the standalone bar license.
Okay. And then another question I had is, obviously, this is a big area, and you stated that within the overlay, there could potentially be three establishments within that vicinity that fits this description.
That's correct. This is about 40 acres, as I understand, between 10A, 10B, and 10D is about 40 acres. So if that were to be the bar, if that were to be approved, the city code would not allow any more than three, just on basis of that. Let's say that were approved and then one bar were to establish there, one bar license were to establish there, and then the city council approved another one at another interchange with two in it. This would no longer be able to add anymore because some of the others were used somewhere else.
Based on the quota, the amount of residents.
Based on the city's quota within its law. Now, there's bar licenses, both have a city quota and a state quota. State law limits them per per resident, per citizenry as well. And so just because the city passes this, there's no guarantee that there will be a bar license available from the state next year, right? And so there's kind of a double-layered, I don't want to call it a game, it's a regulatory just process. You're not always guaranteed a bar license in Utah when you're ready to when you're when you're ready to want one.
So based on all of those numbers, potentially, there will be one here until our volume of residents increases.
So right now, without the overlay overlay zone law, there would not be room for any here until we added 4,000 residents. Because the city council passed the overlay zone law a few years ago, any area has the right to come and ask for an overlay zone. And right now, the overlay zone quota of three has not had any of them used. And so I'll tell you that right now, this zone could have up to three there because none of the quota of overlay zone bar licenses have been used yet. Now, if they were to build one, let's say they get approved and build one, and then somebody gets approved somewhere else and builds two. You know, those two, if they come first, will will, you know, exhaust what their opportunities are in this zone. I'm not aware of any other overlay zone applications at this time. This is the only one that I have knowledge of, so I'm not suggesting there is somebody else out there.
That that was my question. This is the only is this the only overlay zone the city would have so far for this?
Only one we've received, only one that's that we've heard heard talk about. We have a few theories as to why that is, mainly it's because we don't have a lot of zones that we think are very, very what's the right word, very well-suited for this type of an application. And so we just don't have that many spaces that that people think would make make a good one for this type of a zone.
I'm gonna ask a clarifier because there's two different things out there. My mind's trying to wrap around. We talk about four possibly, but yet we only have a population of 36,000, so we could not do four, right?
We could because we have two, we have two modes of of approval. One of those is the quota system that just by its very, the way it's written, brings a new bar license allowance into existence, the minute the state, the city hits 40,000 and then 60,000. So for every every increment of 20,000 residents, a new bar license opportunity comes into existence in Washington City. That doesn't mean the state will have one for them. That just means, and that means that that bar license could establish in any zone that allows that type of commerce. And so we have the quota system, which
Okay.
from the outset of our existence until today, still has only allowed one because we were just, we're not to 40,000 yet.
So they're independent of each other.
Correct.
If we didn't have this overlay, nobody got one, you'd have to wait till our population hit 40 for the second one to kick in.
Exactly.
But because we have the possibility for someone to ask and apply for an overlay zone, and then they're allowed up to why, what what kicks in? Is it the the three that would come with that? What's the?
The three is just a number that the council put into their ordinance. The concept tracks what St. George has done and other cities have done that have have a demographic that still wants to regulate the location and quantity of bars. And so the best example would just be go over to St. George, and they've got a district where they've kind of done this in. St. George's limiting number is higher than three. Our city council said, you know, for our city, we we don't want the number allowed in overlay zones to be that great, so they said it would be total of three in overlay zones is all that our code currently allows.
Right. No, that helps. I think that might be some other people had that question, so that's the only reason I ask. Okay.
Correct. And our council could say, look, we have 10 overlays zone spots, you know, whoever brings the first three gets them, right? No, our council hasn't done that. There's no restriction on how many areas could be zoned for it, but there is a total restriction of three total in overlay zones in Washington City. And so
Regardless of the acreage.
Correct.
Okay.
So it creates a new a new mode of bringing a bar license into Washington City. It it makes it very council and planning commission centric. You know, the the prior one kicks in the minute that the that the count of residency hits another 40,000 increment. This one, they've got to come to council, they've got to they've got to talk about zoning and all of those details that that that, you know, the the public's representatives get to get to talk about and worry about. And so this one's got a lot more kind of regulatory, kind of political, you you've got to come and make sure the folks that are elected by the public are okay with what you're doing before you can really move forward with it.
With all that said, and still hope that the state even has one available to issue.
Correct. My, I don't, I don't keep track of the state's bar license numbers, but my last understanding is the northern Utah commercial districts that don't limit them at all have just about soaked them all up. And so every couple of years, the legislature will will review their statute and adjust the calculation, which usually frees up a few more, mostly because the state has grown and then the legislature will re-up, you know, we've got this many more residents, so we'll issue this many more, and there's kind of a rush every couple of years, and then they dry up again.
Any other questions before I open this up to a public comment? So this, this is where you all have a chance to give your public comment. The ones that were submitted, we did get them, we've read them, they're on the record for city councils. So if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come and speak to this, please let us know or come up and state what you need to stay to say. If you've submitted your comment, we've read it, please don't reiterate it because it is on record, everyone's gonna see it. So and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to stand here and share some thoughts and feelings. My name is Paul Crawford. I represent the HOA that's in Segment One there, the Copperleaf area. Also behind me are several of our HOA board board members or residents, okay? I've been in communication with the board in Group Three, there's a casitas, which is Kristen Wetzel's group. You probably received that information from her. Consistently, as I talk with the residents, they're concerned for a couple of things. Initially, I think it falls under a category of this view that we're getting that is different than the one that was mailed out. This clearly says a proposed overlay zone for bar establishments and shows the area there for the residents. When I received mine from the mail, it just says subject parcels. So I think that's also a little misleading to the public. The concern was that we're having this hearing or visit with you on a third of July, which is the day before the Fourth of July, and I'm very pleased with how many that are representing our HOAs that are in attendance in spite of that fact. The concern we have is that when we moved here as single families to buy our homes in these areas, 1, 3, and 5, and even below, we were told that this development was primarily going to be in the interest of families and children. I outdoor amphitheater, ice cream stores and restaurants and such. And now we're sitting here and we're listening as Mr. Segmiller here has indicated to us that we can have multiple units placed in here if this gets approved. This is not approved by our residents there, and we're very concerned for the kinds of impact it may have. One of the things that Kristen mentioned in the casitas areas, you have a lot of of rental homes there, but there's no sidewalks, it's a complete walkway back and forth, and she feels very strongly that that would impact the neighborhood that's there and the homeowners in that area. So we encourage comments and you to look at this in terms of family-friendly and positive businesses rather than the numbers that you've mentioned here today, three or four establishments that are not the restaurant with a bar like Longhorn Steakhouse or or Texas Roadhouse. There's no barrier there, there's a complete walkway. We don't see this as what's been promoted as a family-friendly area, and so this is our greatest concern. I want to keep it to three minutes, and so I'll stop right there. Any thoughts?
I'll just say, I I hope I didn't represent that there could be four there. I don't believe that's supported. Yeah, I think we're just talking math. I city law would allow up to three there, but I did not say that it would allow four there.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hello, good evening. I'm Kathy Doster. I'm living in this number one land use thing in Copperleaf.
Can you can you speak into the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. Am I moving too much?
That mic will flex towards you as well if you want to just pull it down. Yeah.
Is that better?
Thank you.
Everybody hear me now? You've got my name? I need to start there? Or we're good? Okay, my only concern is you might want to realize it's like a 200-foot drop off to the back of 10A, B, and C. And kind of don't want people falling down that cliff, which is in my front yard then. So that's my concern. Be aware, try to keep these people with a fence or something so they don't get hurt, and I don't have these people that are inebriated or whatever else they might be and have to deal with them. So that's my concern. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Mick Hazlett. I live at 978 North Catalpa. For perspective for you, if you are standing in the beer garden of the proposed tavern, you can see my front door. First, about 45 years ago, I was appointed to a planning commission in the city of Carbondale, Illinois. I understand the job that you have. I understand the competing interests. I will leave you with a piece of advice that it didn't take me long to figure out, and that was a developer comes before you, requests an innocuous plan, and then comes back with repeated requests for changes. In my mind, that was a pretty unethical thing to do, and I would vote according to that, so please keep that in mind. The developer of this particular project is real fond of using the term high-end. It was described to us as a place where there would be high-end shops, there would be high-end restaurants, and it would be a high-end experience. For me, a trip to Chipotle and then heading down to the tavern is not a high-end experience. Now, I will grant him this, I'm getting old, my hearing's not what it used to be, maybe he said rear end. If he said rear end, then I would agree with that. Lastly, and again, as as Paul Crawford alluded to, the project was sold as a family-friendly area. This is what it would mean for me. I gather the family in the van, we drive up the hill. The first thing we'll do is go to the credit union to get cash out of the ATM. Then we'll drive across the street for a fast food taco and a fast food burger. Once we're done with the meal, we load back in the van, we drive down to 1720, and we go into the tavern. We throw back a few brewskis, maybe share some shots with my 200 new best friends, the senior class at Utah Tech. We get back in the van, and I drive drunk through the residential streets of Sienna Hills to get home. That is not my vision of Sienna Hills. It's not my vision of the city of Washington. I would hope it's not your vision as well, and I would ask that you reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this?
My name is David Clement, and if you look on the map, the little point that sticks out on that blue area in number one is my home. It's the only home that's closest to whatever it is that is being proposed. From the road, I I think I'm the only home that you can see from the road that's up above on Grapevine Crossing North. Just a couple of weeks ago, I happened to go over to the city law office and talk to them about people that were parking up on that road and then venturing down into the valley that's between my home and that road. And they said, well, they shouldn't be doing that. That's private land. That happens to be trespassing. And I said, well, I don't see any trespassing signs. And they said, well, if you go directly outside their door and look on the road to their to their particular facility, there are non-trasspassing signs. I don't see anything that's listed up there on Grapevine North Crossing. So once before, I believe it was Mr. Crawford that mentioned there's no barriers, and the lady that spoke, she said the same thing. So anybody that would be wandering around up there on that property, one of the first places they would be coming to would be the first places they would be coming to would be my property. When the treasure hunt happened to be going on last year, we had anywhere from 30 to 40 people in that ravine coming down onto our property from that area. I don't like that, and I don't think that would be appropriate for the future if we had people who were inebriated doing the same thing. So I would hope you would agree with me and not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Okay, it doesn't look like it. So I'm going to close this portion of the public meeting. Do you guys have any questions before we let the applicant speak?
I think we're, I don't know, maybe, I feel like we're kind of off path because they're talking about a brewski going in, and I don't know where anything's going in over there. I think we're just talking about an overlay, and the overlay is going to allow for high-end, if that's what you want to say, restaurants or whatever. And we all want those restaurants here in Washington County. We're not going to get them without a liquor license. So I think we got to keep on track as far as why we're here for this item, and I think that when these come, there will be barriers, they're going to have to comply to the rules of Washington City for setbacks and fencing and everything else. So I think that's why we're really here, is just to talk about this overlay.
I would agree. We don't know what's really going to go in.
Yeah, it's just for them to have the opportunity to ask city council if they can have. Correct?
Correct.
I mean, even if we approve this, they still have to go to city council and ask city council if they can put a bar in and come up with everything.
So in the administrative rules of zoning, if you take our fields area that for a long time was zoned agriculture, and then over the last 20 years, a landowner will come in and say, "Hey, we want to do something that's not agriculture anymore." So the first thing they have to do is request for a zone change, which would just say, "Hey, we want to change this agriculture to, let's use the common one down there, residential." And so our planning office would talk with them and probably get an idea of what type of residential, what type of density, and then would help focus their zone change to the right category of residential. And then that applicant would get a same type of hearing as this happening tonight. The planning commission would recommend approval or denial, and either way, they recommend it would still go to the council, and then the council would have the final say as to whether that residential zone was appropriate for the area, for the district. Tonight's is like that, except it's, if approved, you know, it does allow uses that weren't previously zoned for approval in that area. But to exercise those uses, an applicant would have to bring a subsequent application and get approval for that.
So, based on Doug's comment about having to allow this in order for restaurants to come, is my understanding that restaurants are different than the bar. The restaurant can come without the overlay and still serve alcohol if they get their license.
That's correct. There is a different category, which is called bar establishment in restaurant, that would have to look at how much of their revenue comes from food sales, and that would be a different license than just a straight bar license.
Okay. That was kind of my understanding from the beginning, that this overlay doesn't have to take place in order for a high-end restaurant to come into the location.
Correct. And the folks that live there might not like this, but yeah, a restaurant that would be like a Texas Roadhouse that serves liquor over the counter every day could locate in this commercial district today without any zoning or approval, yeah.
Yeah. So another thought that I've got running through my head, and I don't know what the statistics are or what the research is, you know, what a bar does to a community as far as value, and, I mean, you see the stories in the news or whatever, the things that go on around these clubs or bars or whatever, and sometimes different things happen. But that's not to say that it can't happen at somebody's house as well that's having their own little get-together and doing whatever, you're going to have riffraff in a neighborhood. You know, it can happen. It's not just in a bar that that type of thing goes on. So it would be nice to know what the economic impact is. I mean, I think there was, you know, comments by our director over the economy that, you know, it does provide inclusion and an opportunity for those types of people that like that type of recreation. Those are just some thoughts that I have, and maybe, you know, the applicant can address some of that, too. Maybe they've done some research.
Do you want to come up? Thanks. Troy?
Hi, Troy Belliston, applicant. So, I kind of wanted to wait to have the conversation. I'm happy to meet with my neighbors out front after the fact, but I wanted to get kind of all the information out there first before we did that. Let me just say, as of today, there is no current applicant coming in, right? The city council created the new process, they created the new zone, and so I'm coming and applying for the zone. You know, quite frankly, I'd probably rather not have spent the $2,300 application fee, but that's the process that the city council created late last fall. Couple of things to note, there are certain establishments that would fall under this rule, right? I have talked to the owners of Silver Reef down there. If you haven't been down there for lunch, they got great food, and they're good operators. They've expressed a desire to do a, potentially do a wine and charcuterie place. The problem with that is, the wine's way more expensive than the food, and it throws them outside of the laws and the rules of the state of Utah, so they would fall under this rule. I'd venture to say there's far more drunks coming out of Texas Roadhouse than a wine and charcuterie place. The other, another establishment, if you guys have been up to Cowabunga Bay, up in Sandy, right across the parking lot is All-Star Family Entertainment, you know, putt-putt and video games and everything else, and right next door is Pins and Ales. Pins and Ales falls under this rule, right? So it's not outside of what, you know, we've been pursuing or planning for the area. It was brought up a minute ago, why the size or why the large area? That's what the meets and bounds of my development area is, and so I submitted the meets and bounds of the development area. Do I know what would be going in? No. If it was a lot, you know, I'd have to come and do an application fee for a lot, and then that may or may not make sense to a tenant to locate them, you know, where they would need to go. So I submitted the meets and bounds of the entire site, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Maybe while the applicant's up, the comment from the public was that this map differs from the map that was mailed out, and...
I don't know what was mailed out because I didn't get a copy of it. My...
Drew might be able to pull it up. It's in the packet, Drew. That the maps are different, I will confirm. I don't believe the maps identify different land parcels. They're just reflected differently in the map, but I think that both of them are identifying the same acreages.
What I submitted was my meets and bounds and the exhibit for that.
And that's what's in the packet.
Because that's part of the application process, to have a meets and bounds.
Yeah.
So, and quite frankly, I've had that meets and bounds in the exhibit for several years. For me to go and submit one square inch would have cost me more money to submit than the application fee, because I would have had to hire an engineer to create that for me and create the exhibits.
So Troy, I do have one question, and I honestly, I have no idea, and I don't know if it's even been a thought, but are there studies or are there anything out there that shows you what it does to a community by bringing a bar into the development? Economic impact or pros and cons?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, you know, look, I don't want a one-and-only or a seedy bar any more than anybody else, right? But I want to have the overlay there so that, you know, for those establishments that would fall under the rules of the state of Utah as they're written, then they can come and apply at some point, right, if they want to go up there. But they, again, they would have to go through a separate application with the state of Utah, and then a separate application with the city that would then come before the city council. So, you know...
That one there, Drew.
Yeah, that's what I submitted right there.
I believe this is what was mailed out. Back to the right, Drew. Nope, other one.
The black and white one to the right.
Yeah, I believe that. Yeah, well, you'll see those two parcels that are circled, and it says "North Parcel" and "South Parcel," and then there's an acreage designation for each. I believe that's what was mailed out to the residents.
Yeah.
And I guess I just wanted to say, I don't find that those two parcels and the parcels identified with the letters 10 and A, B, and D are any different. I think those are the same pieces of land.
Well, pretty close. The east property line of 10B is a little bit different than the east property line of this exhibit, but not much.
And it's only along this little area right here. It's not that varied. Again, you see, you know, you have a little more zigzag right here. That's the only difference I'm talking, you know, that I'm bringing up, that when you look at this, there's the roadway design through here when it clears up here in a second. But again, the only difference is right here. That's not, is this is the roadway, so it's not varying.
So the one that I submitted is a survey exhibit. The other one is certainly not...
Well, this is the official map of Sienna Hills.
It might be the official map, but it's not based on survey directions.
But these do not vary that much.
I think the overlay just gives you more opportunities to develop this piece of land.
Well, it gives me an opportunity to have a conversation, right? So like if, again, using those two examples, if either of them came to me today and said, "Hey, you know, let's have a discussion about whether it makes sense to even come here," then, you know, my response to them today is, "Hey, give me four months to, you know, go see if I can do this for you."
It's not necessarily a bar.
At least if the overlay's been approved, and it's like, "Yeah, okay, we have the overlay, but now you're going to have to go through your process, and you're going to have to meet your requirements, and you're going to have to deal with the state and the city separately." But yes, you know, I've done a little bit of the homework on the front end to create that ability for you to pursue, I guess.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks.
Any more questions? You guys? I'm sorry, up here, we've closed our public comment. He's the applicant.
Troy's the applicant, sir. No...
And we waited till he got done.
The public's entitled to comment at the public hearing. My experience with Washington City is if you're cordial, the chairman probably will let you speak again, but you're not entitled to speak per law, but I'm guessing he'd let you if you were nice to him.
Go ahead. You got to come up here and speak, though.
I just hope that you'll consider...
State your name again, please.
Paul Crawford is my name. I hope that you'll each consider the impact on the community. We've heard you referred to here as establishments that are restaurants with bars, but if you look at where those are at, they're not surrounded by this residential area that's developing, okay? And that's my biggest point. That's the thing that I wanted to make, is that if you try to justify things that are happening, or maybe will happen or not happen, this will be a closed venue for us to speak. This is our opportunity to suggest to you that as citizens in this area, this is not the kind of business establishment that we like in our neighborhoods, and that will impact the families that are there, or the growth that's there at Eight, Seven, Six, that's still, you know, in development. So I encourage you again, when you consider this issue, think about the impact of families, okay?
Chairman, I might just take the opportunity real quick. I'm not arguing with Mr. Crawford or debating any of his points. I think he stated points of the public quite well. Tonight's proceeding through the planning commission is the mandatory public hearing required by state law for a zone change. The planning commission will not approve or deny this application tonight. They will recommend it for denial or recommend it for approval. The city council will meet, and the public will have another chance to show up, and if they want, and the mayor allows, they might have another chance to represent their positions.
Well, look for a motion, unless you guys have anything else to say about it.
Yes, Commissioner Michelle, I mean, I can share my thoughts. I, for some reason, I guess, can't get my head around why to allow such the big area. I'd prefer to see more of a concentrated location, but if it came down to me and had control of what goes into your community, me personally, I wouldn't want the bar in my neighborhood. So that's kind of where I'm at. If you can't control it, great. I don't know what the impacts are of having an establishment like that, what it does. Yeah, you want to be inclusive, you want to allow people to do, but I see, too, like these high-end restaurants, you know, in Olive Garden or Texas Roadhouse, or all of these establishments that we'd love to see here, they can serve their drinks, but be more inclusive, you know, serve food, be inclusive to everyone. But that's just my, this is my own personal opinion.
This is Shiel. I don't drink, I don't plan on starting to drink, and so I don't exercise going to bars, but I do like some recreational opportunities out there, and they do have liquor, and I can't control that. I don't particularly like my grandkids seeing that, but I take them there. So I think this is a place that could have those opportunities of recreational venues that will serve. So I'm for it. I'm for allowing the... I'll make a motion if you want, whatever you want to do.
We just need a motion.
So just one more statement. Tonight's a recommendation, but if the city council were to pass it, and I'll use the commissioner's wording, this would be the city council being in favor of an overlay zone, which then opens the opportunity for additional applications from an applicant for a bar license within that zone. And so it's not approving any specific use, whether it's, what's the one store that everybody wants in...
Trader Joe's?
Yeah, Trader Joe's sells a lot of liquor. It's not approving Trader Joe's or Ribbon Chop or anything else. It's just creating a zone that would, if approved by the council, would open up the opportunity for applicants up to three.
Okay, this is Shiel. I would move that planning commission recommend to the city council a zone change, Z-24-04 designated an overlay zone for a bar establishment as found in Title III, Chapter III, located approximately 1720 East Grapevine Crossing Road North.
Can you just, you recommended, but you didn't say, and I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but either approval or denial. I'm sorry, because it wasn't stated. I know what you're going, what you're trying to say, but throw that word there just a minute.
I would move that we approve this and...
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval. Send it to city council for the zone change of Z-2404 designated an overlay zone for a bar establishment as found in Title III, Chapter III. Three, located approximately seventeen twenty East Grapevine Crossing North, Road North.
So we have a first from Shill.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
And a second from Tupou, uh, roll call voting. Shill?
Aye.
Tupou?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Nay.
I'm Bullock. I'm an aye as well. So this will pass and go to city council with a recommendation.
Yeah, just for all you folks, it's next Wednesday night, right here, same time. So next Wednesday, which is the 10th, that's the next city council meeting. Put that in your reminders on your phone.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is five A, a conditional use permit. Let's see, it's C dash twenty four dash oh five, a conditional use permit approval for a commercial development located at seventy, seven ninety-eight West Buena Vista Boulevard. The application, the applicant is Gallo and Company and the owner is Cypress Federal Credit Union. And we'll turn it over to Eldon.
Thank you, commissioners. All proposed projects along Buena Vista Boulevard require a conditional use permit. The applicant is wishing to build a two-story building that will host a new bank, two quick-serve restaurants, and office space. The property is currently zoned C two and consists of two acres. Zoning to the north, east, and west is C two and Buena Vista Boulevard and I fifteen is to the south. The building is approximately sixteen thousand nine hundred square feet. The first floor consists of two thousand one hundred and fifty-five square feet of kitchen area, one thousand six hundred and forty-eight square feet of dining, and four thousand four hundred and sixty-eight square feet of office space. One of the quick-serve restaurants will provide a drive-through option for customer convenience. The second floor will be office space and is eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine square feet. The bank drive-through is located on the north end of the site. Required parking for the site is ninety parking spaces and the proposal includes one hundred and three. Parking is adequate for this site. The exterior building elevations and landscaping are aesthetically pleasing. The new building will be required to meet the standards as outlined in city ordinances and adopted building and fire codes. Staff feels that if these can be met, then the request should be granted for the proposed new commercial development at this location. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash twenty four dash zero five, allowing for a new bank, quick-serve restaurants, and office space to be built at seven ninety-eight West Buena Vista Boulevard. And that's on to the city council and based on the findings and conditions in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Can, can you show again where the, uh, drive-through is for the restaurant and the, and the bank?
Drive-through is on the, the left-hand side of, of the building. You can see there's kind of an alleyway that wraps around.
So that's the drive-through for the restaurant?
Correct.
Okay, and, and where's the teller, Dill?
Teller's on the northwest.
So just further out and there, so they'll have...
Correct. No attachment to the building, out and away. You won't even be able to make eye contact with the teller or the vehicles, vice versa.
Just a single lane for the drive-through?
Say that again?
Single lane for the drive-through?
There's two, two lanes, two pull-throughs. Oh, the drive-through, yes.
Restaurant, just a single lane?
Yes. The other restaurant, you'll have to park and go inside the building.
Okay, correct.
So I tried to give you some lines and stuff, but the pencil is really weak tonight.
So Buena Vista on the, on the, on the left side?
It's on the bottom.
On the bottom.
Buena Vista's right down here, where the arrow and the...
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my, my packet pulled up, so I'm kind of...
This is over by the Quick Quack, where Quick Quack's going, right?
Yes.
And the Maverick and all that.
Yeah, I'll bring, let me go to our... So the bank's gonna go right. Can you see where my arrow is? I'll try to zoom. But this particular parcel right here in relationship to the, the substation, you know, and then there's a drainage area here. The golf course is right up here and then the hotels are, are the only hotel right now with the future one coming right here. So, and then Quick Quack is right here next to it. Sorry, let me drag that. And then the Panera Bread is right here. So Panera, Quick Quack, Bank with the restaurants in it, fast serve.
So this is a public hearing and I will open it up if anyone wants to comment on this. Okay, I will close the public hearing then. Do you guys have anything for staff?
I like it.
Okay, then I'll look for a motion.
Commissioner Tupou, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of C dash twenty four dash zero five, allowing for a new bank, quick-serve restaurant, and office space to be built at seven ninety-eight West Buena Vista Boulevard on to city council based on the four findings and the ten conditions in the staff report.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, and I a second.
So we have a first by Commissioner Tupou and a second by Commissioner Mitchell. Uh... So Anderson just got here. Just skip him on this one.
Yeah, just leave him out.
Just leave him out on this one.
Yeah, if he just showed up in the middle of it, leave it out. You're good.
Shill? Tupou?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Bullock, I'm an aye as well. So this will go to city council next week. Next one's safe for approval. So next is five B, another conditional use permit, C dash twenty four oh six, approval of a new fuel station and convenience store located at six seventy-five West Telegraph. The applicant is Gallo and Company. The owner is Walmart Estates and we will trust and we will turn this over to Eldon.
All proposed projects along Telegraph Street also require a conditional use permit. The applicant is wishing to develop a new fuel station and convenience store on the north end of the property where the old fuel pumps were located. Property is currently zoned C two. The zoning to the north, east, south, and west is also C two. The proposal includes a sixteen-fuel dispensary canopy and a sixteen-hundred-square-foot convenience store. The convenience store is twenty feet tall and the fuel canopy is seventeen feet eight inches tall. The new building and canopy will blend in with the existing Walmart building and the proposed landscaping is aesthetically pleasing. The new building will be required to meet the standards as outlined in city ordinances and adopted building and fire codes. If these can be met, staff feels that the request should be granted for the proposed new commercial development at this location. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash twenty four dash zero six, allowing for a fuel dispensary and convenience store to be built at six seventy-five West Telegraph. And that's on to council based on the following findings and conditions in the report. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
So, do you have a parcel map that shows where it's going on that parcel?
Just had that up there a second ago, so.
Is this just a, like a, a facelift to the current, uh, fuel station they already have in the parking lot of Walmart or is this a...
Well, they tore that one down. The USA gas is gone.
Gone. And so this is...
And this is going in that same spot, but in a different kind of, the, the USA ran kind of north-south. This one's more east-west along with Telegraph. You can see it down here.
That was kind of what I was envisioning, was they were just doing an upgrade.
Yeah, so this is, this is Home Depot back up in this corner. This is Walmart, the parking lot at the light where you drive in. So all the pumps will be aligned with, on, you know, parallel with, with Telegraph and the store and the parking lot.
Mine north, south, east, west gets all mixed up over there.
Yeah. I'll just put Telegraph's out here where my arrow's bouncing at the bottom right here. That's Telegraph and this is, there's the bank, the Chase Bank is over here. So again, everybody remembers where the old fuel, the USA gas, it's in that corner tucked into that parking area.
Commissioners, I, I did fail to mention condition eleven. Um, prior to issuing the certificate of occupancy, the pavement will be replaced or repaved on the private drive exiting the site at approximately seven hundred west and Telegraph where that street signal is. The applicant noted that on their plan as well. They're planning to do that. I just wanted to make sure the city's, um, got that as a condition as well, that that happens.
Yeah.
Sorry, this is totally flipped a hundred and eighty degrees, but...
So it'll, yeah, basically function just like the old one used to be and just, this will be a little...
And the, and the store will be bigger. Remember, the old one was just a little pious kind of where you, you walked in. If there were three people in there, you had to shuffle to the side, right? You remember what it was like. And, but this will be an actual kind of little mini, mini grocery store.
So this is a public comment as well. So we will open this up if anyone wants to have their comment on the record for this five B. Please do, let us know. Don't look like anybody's there. I will close the public comment. Look for anything from you guys or a motion.
This, Shill, I propose that the planning commission recommend to city council for conditional use permit, C dash two four dash oh six, for a fuel station located at six twenty-five West Telegraph Street.
Recommend approval.
Yep.
Or, yeah.
Recommend approval. Did I not say that?
You did.
I said recommend. Okay.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, aye second.
We got a first from Shill and a second from Mitchell. Uh, Anderson? Aye. Shill?
Aye.
Tupou?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Bullock, I'm an aye as well. This will pass and go on to city council with a recommendation of approval. Next is five C, a request, C dash twenty four dash oh eight, request for a conditional use permit for an existing commercial development located at twenty-five North three hundred West number B. The applicant is Robbie Staley. And we'll turn it over to Eldon.
Thank you, commissioners. The old tenant of this building, Raleigh Red Barn, has since moved locations and the applicant is proposing to update the exterior finishes of the building. The new event center will accommodate gatherings such as weddings and/or corporate events. The exterior modifications will enhance the look of the building by updating the building with a more modern finish and color. The updates include installing board and batten that will be painted a light neutral color. Proposed operating hours for this use will be evenings and weekends, which the applicant suggests will not interfere with the other businesses as they currently operate during daytime hours and are closed during the weekend. With that being said, parking is adequate for the site with the proposal showing one hundred and seventy parking spaces. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the intent of the current zoning regulations for this site. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of C dash twenty four dash zero eight, allowing for new exterior finishes and an event center located at twenty-five North three hundred West number B. And that's on to city council with the findings and conditions in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioner Tupou, they, you said that they would be open evenings. So what are those hours? Like how late are they gonna be open?
I would ask the applicant to be specific.
Oh, okay. And then like all day on the weekends?
Could, could be.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think they have set hours, but focusing on the night and weekends for this.
Uh, we're, we're just approving the exterior, not, not the event center, correct? Because the event center falls under, or do they need a conditional use permit for this? I'm a little confused right here, I guess. I thought it was just for the exterior.
In essence, you are correct.
So, I mean, it doesn't matter really what the event center's holding. I mean, because they, it's, it's a permitted use, correct? And so all we need to do is, because of the exterior of it, or is it a conditional use for what's going on?
Well, is it in the code, is it in that, is it, actually, it is used because it fits in the C two and I think special event things are under CUP as well. So it is both.
Okay, I was just, I was just confused for a second.
We went from car washes to wedding events. Now we're gonna have the wedding car wash. That'll be the next hot thing, so. There'll be spring champagne on the cars as you drive through and get married. There we go.
This is a public comment. I'll open it up to the public if there's anyone that wants to have anything to say. Okay, I will close the public comment. Do you guys have any questions for staff or the applicant? Is the applicant here? Do you want to come up and talk to, I mean, it's up to you.
Uh, Robbie Staley, I'm the applicant. Um, I don't know if you have any questions. I would just love to answer, but I know there was a question about the hours. Um, so our events that we hold, um, close down at ten, but we allow an hour or two cleanup. So, um, mostly everyone's out by eleven. Uh, but, you know, it's in the contract that they need to be, um, usually closed down at ten and out by midnight, but...
So, and so the starting, the opening time would be what, four or five?
So, and it depends. It, it depends on the situation and, um, you know, this will be mainly a wedding venue, but under that, there could be some allowances for, you know, some other type of events that are similar in size to that. So, that being said, um, mainly weddings, uh, but, you know, there could be setup, um, so people could come in, maybe do a ceremony, um, you know, earlier, then have a reception later. And so, you know, on the weekends, it could be a full-day use, come in at nine, usually out by ten till eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Drew, how, could you show us on, on like Google Maps or something? How close is the nearest residential to this?
Yeah, we're so lucky tonight. Everything's within almost a couple of drags on the screen here. This is a condominium project right here, but the Mill Creek is in between. So, and then to the north, you've got all the way up. It's this one with a perched roof coming out. No, that's actually up here. Yeah, this is, this, the condo project has been here for thirty years, I think. Right? Would you say it's been thirty years that those guys built over there?
Pearl condominiums.
Pearl condominiums.
Yeah, it, they have been there for quite a while. Um, so originally, just to give you a little bit of history, this, this building was built for that type of use and we did have those type of events in there. We build a catering company across the street, which is now Regotti's, which kind of fed some of those buildings with, um, those type of events. That's, was the original intent of, of some of those. Um, when we, uh, allowed or when we worked out for rol- rolleys to come in and... Um, when we, uh, allowed, or when we worked out for Rowe, Rowleys to come in and, and do their store, it was being used for that type of, um, use prior to that, um, for probably about twenty years.
Is this where the, where the Big Red Barn was?
Yes, it's the same building, yeah.
Well, the building right next to it used to be a dance hall, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, they do country line dance there on Tuesdays now, and then that is also used for the same type of building, um, as far as weddings. This will give us an opportunity to maybe, like, someone to come in, rent both buildings out, you could do a ceremony in one, maybe the lunch in or the dinner, uh, have it all ready to go. Use the other building for, you know, the ceremony, vice versa. Where those two buildings are in close proximity, we plan on doing some landscape stuff between eventually to maybe make those two kind of, um, flow and work together, so.
This'll be like a one-stop shop, because he's got like the little honeymoon suite across the parking lot.
Yeah, so I don't know if you've seen, uh, we do have this silo inn, which is located right in the middle. You can see that big tower. So that is also, um, used for, you know, um, with, with what we do right now. We've had, um, brides rent that out, or family members come in and stay there the day before, use it, you know, during, during their, their wedding. And it gives them a, a place for people to stay, there's a, um, we have three units there on site that, um, like Airbnb-type units that people can use as well, so. Um, we've just really grown that, that business, and we're just trying to accommodate for some more flexibility in what people are wanting, so.
No bar.
Want me to take a stab at it, or am I?
You can let me take a try.
You, you do it.
Get them all. Okay, this is Commissioner Mitchell, I, uh, move that we, and this goes to City Council, right? So we're just recommending, so we recommend approval of the request for a conditional use permit for the exiting commercial, am I on the right one? Yeah, exiting commercial development located at twenty-five North three hundred West B. And send it to City Council with the four findings and six conditions.
Shill, I second.
I'm first by Mitchell, second by Shill. Anderson?
Aye.
Shill?
Aye.
Tupou?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Bullock, I'm an aye as well, so this passes and go to City Council next Wednesday. So that's, that's it for this meeting, we just need to adjourn.
You move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that concludes, and we'll start the land use in just a second, yep. Yeah. Authority meeting for July third. Let's start with the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Commissioner Tupou, I, I recommend approval of the agenda as proposed.
This is Commissioner July second.
So I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, item number two is the approval of the amendments from the June fifth, twenty twenty-four land use authority meeting. For a motion or any?
Mr. Shill, I, I would, uh, move that we approve the land use authority minute, minutes from June fifth of twenty twenty-four.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
We have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And item number three is declaration in absence or in conflicts.
No. I have none.
Okay, so, our first on the land use authority is four A. Action is a amended final plat approval for the Rio Virgin Industrial Park subdivision located at one thirty South Warehouse Drive. The applicant is Isaac Bundy. And we'll turn this over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a partial amendment to the final plat of Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase One. The reason for this amendment is to combine four lots into two lots. The proposal is to combine lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight into one lot, and lots twenty-nine and thirty into one lot. No other changes are being made at this time. Staff has reviewed the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the I two zoning of this development. Subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinances of the city. Staff recommends the land use authority approve Sunrise Valley Industrial Park Phase One partial amendment, combining lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and combining lots twenty-nine and thirty, based on the following original findings and conditions as stated in the report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. This is a public comment, is there anyone that would like to address any of this? Or have a comment? Okay, I will close the public comment section.
I'll make a motion, this is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve item four A, amended final plat approval for the Rio Virgin Industrial Park subdivision located at one thirty South Warehouse Drive, with the findings and conditions outlined by staff.
Is that Rio or Sunrise Valley? Is it the same?
Sunrise Valley Industrial Park.
Sunrise Valley Industrial Park.
Commissioner Tupou, I second that.
I'm first by Anderson, and second by Tupou. Individual voting, Anderson, aye. Shill?
Aye.
Tupou?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Bullock, I'm an aye as well, and so this, this is approved. The next is adjournment.
Mr. Shill, I would move that we adjourn this meeting.
Tupou, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.